Good evening. It is 7 o'clock on Tuesday, April 5th, 2022, and I would call the meeting of the Douglas Board of Selectmen to order. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do not have any announcements. I'm filling in for the chairman tonight. Is there anyone here for anything that is not on our agenda? Seeing none, I'll move right to item number one, the Tri-State Trek Road Race, January, sorry, June 24th. I think he's on the screen.
Mike Sweeney.
Yeah, send that, Gary. Hi, my name is Kevin Sweeney, and I am from ALS Therapy Development Institute, and we are the first nonprofits by a check, and we do drug research for ALS. So, the Tri-State Trek is a 270-mile bike ride that we will be riding from Boston College to Greenwich, Connecticut, to raise money, to continue funding, to make those advances in medicine. So, we are asking to use the roads in Douglas so that our riders are able to go through towards the area itself.
I see a letter here to the chief of police. I see a route map. I see a certificate of liability insurance. Anything back from Chief Migliannico?
He had no issues. I don't think he was requiring details for this race. Fire and EMS laws, though.
They want details?
Yep, that's why Chief is in this here.
Just one ambulance on duty while the whole bike race comes through. It's pretty spread out, and we did have an incident last year. We had a bike that raced that just came through the corner of the state, and we ended up having a trauma of a flight specialist and pulling the on-duty ambulance away from town for a couple of hours, going to the trauma center. So, we'd like to still be able to have the, an ambulance available for the town in case there's some type of a mishap.
Understood. I think that's a good idea. Any further discussion?
Not on this end. I think that's a policy that we agreed to six, eight months ago, and I think that's a good one. Just curious, can we, because we staff, can we cover Oxbridge? I mean, I know there's mutual aid, so maybe that will trigger any effort, but for the folks that are organizing, would it be helpful for them to know that Douglas is on call?
Yeah, probably would be, exactly.
Okay.
Further discussion? I wouldn't entertain a motion. Make a motion. So, what do you want, a motion to authorize them to use the roads in Douglas?
With the condition, I think, of hiring an ambulance.
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bone and aye?
Cortez, aye. Is Hal on board?
I do not see him yet.
Not on. No, no, you got three, so you're good.
Mr. Sweeney, you're all set. Please stay in touch with us on this, okay?
Thank you, Director.
Thank you. Good luck.
Item number two, an application for a new common vic license for BZ Nutrition at 320 Main.
Yeah, please.
Hi.
Evening.
Sorry, a little nervous.
Don't be, there's only 1,000 Douglas residents watching.
Glued to the screen, all of them.
Talk to us, what's your idea?
So, we have a few of these. We're basically just a nutrition shop. People come in, almost like a, it's like a healthy version of a Starbucks or Dunkin' Donuts. People come in, have a tea, have a shake. Some people will sit, most people grab and go. We have a local shop in Whitensville as well, same thing.
No food.
No food, it's all teas, shakes. No, we actually have no food ingredients on premises at all, it's all powder and water, no dairy. We run, like, weight loss competitions.
Most people just walk in and walk out, they don't sit for a while. It's usually like the kids after school that will come in and hang out with their friends, but other than that, most of the time is five, 10 minutes.
So, you make something nutritional that the kids like?
Yeah. Actually, it's a lot, mostly kids.
Really?
High school kids, yeah.
Yeah.
More, from my knowledge, than anything else, is a common vic license required if it's drinks and not food?
Yeah, if they have seating within, they would need one. And the only thing on my memo, I did receive the building sign-off this afternoon, so that doesn't apply.
So, they are all set?
Yeah. And I received a fire inspection report as well from Assistant Chief Manning.
Need more help.
Yeah, they were fine, yeah.
Just going in the space where Tanya's treasurer's was.
Yeah.
Nice. Let me think for a little. When do you think you'll open?
We've been ready for a long time.
So, you're waiting, you're not waiting for us, are you?
We're waiting.
All right, well, certainly wish you the best of luck, it's always great to have business.
Yes, as always.
Thank you, we're happy to be here.
So, with that, I would make a motion that we approve the common vic license for BZ Nutrition and welcome them with open arms.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bone and aye?
Cortez, aye.
Yay, thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Item number three, meet with moderator and town clerk for May 2nd town meeting and possible votes.
The clerk is not going to make it tonight, she had to go to an appointment.
Okay.
She did try to contact you, Keith.
I did get the email, so. She tends not to like to speak on camera anyways, I don't think it's a big deal. How are we doing?
Good, how are you?
Oh, not too bad. So, just a few quick things, the special town meeting.
Good evening, Hal.
Hey, Hal. Increased technology expenses.
That's all right.
Is that supposed to be a question mark or a T?
It's a question mark.
Okay.
I'm waiting to hear back.
Okay.
Are you jumping right into the warrant?
Yep.
That's item number four, right?
Yeah, so where are we?
The special. So, we're just, I guess we're just waiting for a final count on that.
Oh, I see, S-H-I, question mark.
Yep. So, moving right along. So, S-H-I is the vendor.
Correct.
I think we're gonna do pretty similar to kind of what we've been doing, going into the annual Article 1, 2, and 3. I think we're gonna do that the way that we used to, where I'll have the FinCom read off each heading and see if there's any, you know, any holds on those. Everything else, I think I'm going to do motions from the floor again. That seems to really move things along a lot quicker and save time for actual debate and comments and that stuff, if, you know, if it's needed, rather than shuffling people around the, you know, the meeting the whole time. Articles 5, 6, and 7, I'm gonna take a motion to combine those again. I appreciate you guys putting those in order. Looking at Article 9, if we look at the Office Administrator Compensation Plan, and this is really pedantic, but under all of the other hourly wages, you have the asterisks with the minimum wage will increase, but I did not see that under office administrate, administrative.
Actually, Keith?
Yep.
That column 0 should be not there, so it doesn't affect that compensation plan because it changes dollars to wages.
Okay.
Only, Lisa, do you have that?
Yep.
And the same with public works, that 0 not there.
Okay.
That should be the F1.
And just to give you a heads up, you, well, okay, yeah, it will still apply because column 1 still has an hourly under 15.
Not in office administration.
No, under public works.
Will apply to public safety and miscellaneous.
Maybe I'm missing something, but.
Public works, 1, 1.
Oh, I apologize, okay, yep, I get it now, sorry. The way that, yeah, all right, I get it now, thank you. Article 11, can someone just give me a quick rundown of why? Yeah, just why? I'm guessing it has something to do with zoning restrictions in residential neighborhoods or something like that, but I just, I was just curious what the kind of Reader's Digest version on Article 11 is.
We have the town plan.
Article 11.
I have a pledge of honor for the article numbers.
Oh, the building height.
For the record, Matthew, I'm a community development director at Douglas. This item was put in here at the recommendation of the building commissioner, as the determinations for height and elevation varies between developers, depending on terrain and many factors. Felt that it was important to make sure that we have one clear definition of both elevation and height.
Article 12 is just, the zoning bylaws just going away altogether, no replacement for a moratorium, obviously. Okay, sorry, these allergies are killing me today, they're just brutal. My head just, I swear it's gonna explode at any time. Okay, so Article 13, again, if I'm being very, very pedantic, you're already aware of the, of the sentence that needs to go away.
Yes.
But also, under the end of that paragraph, "No building permit shall be issued by the building inspector without the written approval of the site planned by the," that comma shouldn't be there.
Should the second comma be there, you think, Keith? What does Mr. Deed say?
You know, as I was gonna say, I think you and I shared an English teacher that, you know, we could, we could go back and forth with on that, but.
We could. That's funny.
Which one of you has drunk and which one of you has wane?
The, after 6.8, 0.3, 0.4, the right of first refusal, I didn't quite understand how that fit into the bylaw if, if, if someone could just give me a brief rundown on that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the reason this one is here is because site plans can have expirations for as to when the board has to render their decision. I believe this is here to make sure that the first right is allowed for without having to request extensions prior to the board having to render a decision on an open application. That fully answers it, but in some cases, where Solar is trying to go on to 61A property, the town does have the opportunity, first right, as you all know, with the ownership property that's currently active. If it is in the, I believe this is there to cover that, this also came out of a state template that has recommended it be in, in all solar regulations, so.
So, it clears up the process of having to request continued extensions and it just tolls the date instead?
That's my understanding.
To make sure, preserving the rights of the town?
Great, thank you. And then the last question I had, Article 15, I guess, are we still using mimeographs? Is that, like, why can we never get a good printed map so people know where things are?
This came from Bob Manner.
So, he's probably still using it.
Bob might still be.
He got it off.
So, just for, for town meeting, if we can get a little more detailed map that I can throw up on the, on the slide, I just, I'd appreciate that.
The one I have is also in color that I will give you, so it's a little easier to see.
Okay.
You can't do color on the FinCom flyers, so.
Right.
It kind of buzzes it out a little bit.
Oh, you have a nicer one, I think.
But I do want a more, I can get you more details.
Okay, yeah, that would be great. I just, I always like to make sure that people understand, you know, where we're, where we're talking about. And then I guess Article 18, that was a little above my pay grade for understanding on first read. I think I have an idea of what it is, but since the chief's here, I guess if you could give me just a, again, a Reader's Digest version of that one, I'd appreciate it.
I don't know if this is something the chief thinks about too much. There's a.
Okay, sorry.
Statute that was passed some time ago that allows those individuals who may have served in a qualified department and who also worked for the town, worked and actually subsequently took employment with the town, invested in their retirement plan, to buy some time from the amount of time they spent as a qualified fighter.
Okay.
It's not, they can't buy back the entire amount of time. They can buy back, I think it's up to two years. That's important to you if you're looking to, is it five? It's five years you can buy back. We have two, is it only two or is there a third?
Me, John, and me and Keith?
No, Adam. So, it's John and Adam Furno, the chief, Campo never worked for the town, so nobody else that are in this predicament. Many municipalities have adopted this local option, so the request from John Furno in particular is that we adopt this.
Okay. And that is really, oh, no, I did have.
No.
Article 19, I'm lost. What is the actual project? It's the Douglas Sewer Asset Management Project.
So, I believe, you can explain to me fairly recently, I know it's been the subject of lengthy conversation by the water commissioners, break this into little pieces, little phases here and there, but we do a system assessment. So, where are you getting infiltration, where are you leaking a wall to the assets? When's the last time you turned that valve? And that's part of the report that you have to do on a healthier system. There's funding in place to accomplish this, but I believe there is a town, a town to raise and appropriate the sum, and I believe it's a match, $75,900 grant, which is 60% of the project cost.
Okay.
So, I believe it's a reimbursable grant, to raise and appropriate and get the money back.
I did have one other question on the solar bylaw, 6.8, 0.1, 3.3, which is almost at the very end, and I'm probably gonna wind up insulting someone by accident, or at least at a minimum advertising my ignorance, but do we have a community development director?
Your prediction is accurate.
Okay.
So, that was officially Bob, Bill Kondov's actual title.
Okay.
People called him the town engineer. He was the community development director.
Gotcha.
He left, he was replaced by Mr. Briney.
Okay. Sorry about that. Yeah.
That's okay, he's not on the compensation table.
Yeah, well, I.
You know, it's good company.
Yeah.
We'll have to update the comp table.
Yeah, I did not know that that title had changed, so, good. So, I managed, managed to be insulting and show my ignorance. I got a twofer on that one.
The good news is you did it now instead of May 2nd.
You found a comma, you're all right.
Yeah, yeah, you're good, you're good. There's no semicolons you wanna get rid of?
No, there is, no. Any questions for me?
Do you want me to send you those files as well for all those zones?
Yes, yep.
Mr. Chairman, I had one thought. I think I had spoken to the board about maybe introducing a new thing before the town meeting, a state of the town, it is a state of the nation, state of the state, and maybe you reach a 10-minute presentation of the problems the town has had this year and also a lot of the good things that have gone on. It would seem to me that an annual town meeting could be the appropriate place to do that, you know, maybe the chairman could make that presentation, but I think there is a lot of things that have happened in the town, and I think it's an opportunity to make a presentation, I just wanna see if Keith has any issues with that or anybody on the board.
It's, it is outside the purview of town meeting. It is something that I can look into and research a little bit, but the, in theory, once you start the meeting and until you end the meeting, you know, it is, it's supposed to, unless there's an article, then, you know, it's, it's not supposed to be discussed. That said, you know, I'll, I'll look into it, and we'll, we'll see if we can come up with something. Maybe it happens right before the meeting.
Maybe we will slowly open the town meeting until the presentation is made.
Yep, like I said, I'm sure there's, there's workarounds, but.
I don't know how the other board members feel about that, but.
I think Kevin will do a fine job.
Maybe you can look into it, Keith.
I think it's a good idea if we can stay within the confines of the statute.
Yeah.
You know, if we do it before we call the meeting to order and.
The, you know, I do, I've, I've been trying to move towards brevity, so, you know, and making sure that enough time is carved out for, you know, discussion and debate rather than procedures and that stuff, so I wouldn't wanna add to the length of the meeting. Sometimes the specials tend to be a little on the shorter side, that might be a better time to do it. This one here, I don't anticipate going overly long, but like I said, it's just, let me, let me give it some thought and see, you know, see, see what we can come up with. Any other questions? No?
In the back. Gene?
Are you hard and fast on the FinCom, they're gonna ask what their role is?
I'm not hard and fast on it. I'll, I'll talk to FinCom and see what they think.
We do have a new chair, so this would be his first time presenting that.
Okay, I'll see what they're more comfortable with. I'm starting to think about it now, and I think last meeting, I think I actually read through it, and then I, and I just, you know, checked off if there was a hold, the meeting before, like I had them do it, so, yeah, I'll, I'll talk to them and I'll.
The public hearing's on Tuesday, it would be great if you had any surprise about.
Next week?
Yes, I'm gonna talk.
All right. I can do that.
Vic Anderson, I guess, in the chair.
Okay. Yeah, I'll talk to Dick, we'll see what he thinks.
I don't think he'll be disappointed if he doesn't do it.
Noted.
I don't wanna speak for him.
Fair enough. Okay. All right, well, if there's nothing else from me, I appreciate your time, and.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you in May, and make sure whoever's running this updates the Chrome browser.
I've been told if I do that, I'll melt the computer. All right, that was item 3 and 4. Well, review and sign both warrants.
Yeah.
Do you see need for further review or?
We are, April 5, we're doing this May 2nd, and we've got another.
So, FinCom meets the 12th. I have to have the FinCom flyer to the printer by the 14th, and the town clerk to be posted in time for the meeting. That's next Thursday.
Okay. So, I had anticipated, Mr. Chairman, going through the budget while you were talking about the warrant, because that will actually appear in the warrant in the format that it normally appears in, that Select Board asks for every year. Thank you. So, do you want to do that now, or do you want to do my, during my report? I think better now. Fast this around. So, the, the statute that creates. Let me interrupt you, just say this will be item 4. This will be Article 4 in the annual town meeting. Yeah, item 4 on our agenda, I mean. Item 4 on the town, the Select Board's, yeah, tonight, yes. It's Article what? 2? 2. Okay. The statute that creates the town administrator's role and responsibilities is clear that the town administrator prepares a recommended budget for the Select Board and for the Finance Committee and presents that to both. And the remaining structural elements of the town, the Finance Committee actually reports a budget to the floor of town meeting. So, when they vote, they actually have the ability to populate the numbers in the budget and then recommend a budget to town meeting, and that becomes the underlying motion. And different groups, different people, the Select Board, anyone can stand and try to amend that motion as it proceeds. I think in the past, there's been this emphasis on multiple steps here, and really, it's the FinCom, it's, it's the budget that they are to prepare, and this year, they've gone through meetings with all the department heads, and they've always had the town administrator and the finance director present to ask questions and to pursue different ideas that they've had about structuring each individual department's operations. operations. The process that we followed was to ask all of the department heads to present a needs budget, what they need to do to optimize their operations, using the format we've always used for kept building the budget up, which is basically the town accountant's structure of accounts, is a term of art, chart of accounts, and her activity numbers and all the rest of it, which the department heads did. And when we got to the end of that, we had a fairly substantial deficit of close to $478,000 over our projected revenues. And the exercise that I engaged in for a couple of weeks after the finalization of the department head's budget was to bring that number down to balance. And we accomplished that by looking at the revenue side first and thinking, are we being prudent? It's one thing to be conservative, but we should also be prudent if we really, really know that a revenue account is going to perform well. And we know that we're going to have to cut our department heads' requests in order to balance the budget. Is there anything we can do to those revenue accounts that brings them closer to what we think we're actually going to gather up? We did, we increased the revenue estimates on two lines in the revenue budget. One of those is the building permit fees account. We had already assumed for the purposes of the budget that that account would deliver $150,000 over its traditional projection of 2% year-over-year. And we've increased that to $250,000. The extra $100,000 is based on our assessment of the pipeline. Through the subdivision process, through the building permit process, how many permits have already been pulled this year that will be part of larger developments that go into next fiscal year. So we felt comfortable, both Gene and I, recommending increasing that revenue line by $100,000. We also increased the account called new growth, which reflects revenue that's collected from construction that's done during the year and that joins the value as of the 31st of December of the calendar year from the previous year. So we typically budget a very low number. So we rate around $150,000 is in the budget every year for that line item. But between all of the permits that have already been pulled and all the construction that's already been done and what we anticipate coming through the rest of this year, we felt that a new growth figure of $250,000 was more than a little bit defensible. We haven't been that low in new growth for many years now. So new growth has been up around $300,000, $350,000 on average over the last four or five years. We're not going to go all the way up to that. We're just going to go up to $250,000. But that $200,000 really helped close the mountain. So what I was left having to balance was $275,539 worth of proposed spending. The biggest chunk of that came from very good news. The school business manager had carried $450,000 as a potential increase in the school transportation contract. Because she was figuring worst case, right? Fuel expenses are up, insurance expenses are up, it's hard to find drivers, you know, all the economic indicators in the transportation industry are pushing up. So when we finally did open the bids after she had proposed her budget, she was able to reduce her request for a school transportation by $105,000. That's a really big change, and that really helped get the budget back to where it needed to be. But that still left $170,000 to take out of the department head requests. Before I get, I want to try as best I can to go through the departments, but the other big piece of this that didn't really come through until last week was the approach that we've taken with the collective bargaining unit, the Douglas Teachers Association, was we wanted them to agree with us, to take their compensation table, and instead of having it such a, an aggressive climb from step one to step 11, and flatten that out a bit. And it accomplished two major policy goals. One is it takes the salary of an entry-level teacher and makes it more competitive with what's being offered in other school districts, so that we'd be in the hunt to get highly motivated teachers to come work in Douglas. But it would also make the budget more predictable. It would slow down the rate of increase in the teachers' payroll, because people moving through the system of steps, if they had a six or seven or eight percent step and a whole bunch of teachers were in that cohort and hit that step the same year, the budget at the school department would increase far above and beyond what our ability is to give them money in the bottom-line budget. You're never going to completely fix this, but in the contract negotiations, we proposed a maximum step increase for the top step from going from step 10 to step 11 of 6%. And today, that's more like 12 or 13%. So trying to, that 6% would be the highest. Most, in the early years, would be 3%. Still higher than the municipal steps, but it's a much more manageable rate of increase for this group. In order to do that, it would be necessary in settling the contract to increase the total amount of money provided to the school department by the town. So the funding mechanism that I'm proposing is that the school budget, which the bottom-line budget, the budget that we're locked into on a go-forward basis, we had set at one and a half percent year-over-year for every year of the budget forecast. What I'm proposing is instead that for the next three years, that 1.5% be a 2%. So we would increase our bottom-line obligation to the school department each year for fiscal '23, '24, '25 by 2%. That would allow their bottom-line budget to grow to the point where they could absorb the cost of a contract. But for the first two years, they're going to be short. So with the free cash that we have certified, the proposal is for the town to subsidize the settlement of the contract by $327,000 and change in the first year of the contract, about $165,000 in the second year of the contract, and then no further after that. By year three of the contract, the school department's bottom-line budget will have grown to the point where they can sustain their own labor agreement. That was in exchange for this added stability, which will benefit the town for decades to come. And, you know, the mediator referred to it as a negotiations unicorn, because many people have tried to do this and have not been successful. There are other terms that the school committee will discuss. There was a professional day added, so the teachers will not work four professional days. In the long-term health of the community fiscally, if we can take as many of our major accounts and slow their rate of growth down to a flat line, then we can plan and we can do things responsibly without having to do the O-word, override, ever again, if you have thoughtful about how you're going to manage your resources. So that, this was a major step forward in doing that. The teachers' union ratified that contract with 94% of their membership's vote on Friday. So that's a healthy margin. There's a one-year deal in place for the year we're in. They supported that 100%. So that's, you will see in this budget, a specific line item that is broken out for that subsidy. You know, so it's personnel, so under the school department, this would be on page four of this document I sent to you. Education, Douglas Public Schools, the second line down will say personnel parentheses, contract settlement, 327347, which is the precise number. That is not going to be a standing commitment. So that's why I broke it out separately. That's a one, this is year one subsidy, there'll be a year two subsidy, and then it's going to go away. Are there any questions about that before I go into the operating budget of the departments?
Just one on my end. It's what type of protections does the town have that, you know, as school committees change, the DTA representatives change, administrate, not administrators, but superintendents change in years three, four, five, that we're not fighting the same debate that we've been fighting over the past two years? Would they just want more and more and more?
So my answer to that is you have no such assurances. That in a collective bargaining framework, it is up to the management side of the table to determine where it's going to hold firm and to do so.
Yeah.
But the contract going forward will be the contract they agree to. So if it's going to change to something else, somebody somewhere has to want it to change. And has, can't just be somebody somewhere, it has to be somebody on both sides of the table, because any other change from this format would have to be bargained. So the school committee shouldn't give up on the new compensation table for any reason unless they get significant concessions to get it back, because the town is making this funding commitment to make their system work better for them. But I, just to, you can get really different outcomes depending on who's sitting at the table in a negotiation. So choose wisely. On the selectman's budget, I'll go through it sort of a high level. I'm not going to get into every last penny that is moved from here to there. I just will say that in column four, what I'm doing is comparing my proposed budget for fiscal '23 to the one that was approved in fiscal '22 without any edits from special town meeting. I just, what we, what was done in annual town meeting. And then in column five is the change from the department heads' requested budget that I, those are the areas that I cut, where I had to add some money in order to get the balance, that budget to balance. In the selectman's budget, the wages reflect, and across-the-board policy for the town, which I actually will pause when we have a global policy. Let me just talk about it upfront. We've spoken at some length about the compensation table on the town side of the budget, and its inadequacies, and it's, in some cases, areas where it needs to be updated. Because when we go out and advertise, we find ourselves having to adjust salaries significantly in order to get people to apply for our positions. And in the meantime, when those positions are sitting vacant, the work piles up, or we're paying some outside vendor to do the work at a much higher cost than the salary to a benefited employee. So the best thing for the town is to post the position, fill the position with a competitive salary compared to other towns. This kind of situation doesn't arise overnight. When the town went through difficult times, a lot of its employees made sacrifices. They had years where there were no steps, there were years where there were no COLAs, or where the COLAs were very modest compared to neighboring communities. So after about 10 years of that, when you look at it, you say, okay, we're quite a fit, quite a bit behind. In order to fix that, I'm looking at changing our step structure considerably. There are lots of really significant collective bargaining units. The ones I'm most familiar with, the AFSMI local, that represents Rhode Island State workers. But we also have one here in terms of our police union that are willing to agree to a step structure that is a blend of merit and time of service. It's understood that when you first, when you walk in the first day as an entry-level employee, that you are a probationary employee, that you're not earning the full salary that you will earn when you have all the skills you need to do your job. And everybody that you're going to work with is like, yeah, you can do it, right? You're not going to fail at this. So there should be a period of time which an employee is a probationary employee, and that'll be less than the actual longer-term salary for the position. Maybe it's six months. Then you have a couple of steps upfront for the first two or three years. So police union here does a one, a two and a half, and a four. I think what we used to do in Rhode Island State Government was step one, 18-month step, and then a step three. But you get the point, right? It's about three steps pretty quick. So for the first three years that you're on the job, you're learning, you're acclimating, you're contributing, and you rise to a level where now you're a little bit more tenured. And at that point, you have to wait until you get a next step, which is typically year five. That's not too long a wait, but then from year five, you don't see another step until year 10, and then year 15. Once you get past 10, what you're talking about is longevity. A lot of our jobs in municipal government, you can't really judge whether people are doing a good job unless they consistently do it well for a long time. And that's when you know there's value there, so we need to compensate that so they don't leave and go to another town. Right now, where we're at, we have a 10-step, it was built for merit. So in each pay grade, there are 10 steps, and it was designed to be driven by evaluations, but evaluations will rarely have ever done. Most of the records I see of evaluations go back to the early 2000s. So, and frankly, it becomes very subjective, and time is just as good a measure as the, the annual evaluation has to occur, but time is an element as well. In order to get people to work here after posting a job, I'm, find myself offering them step five. So effectively, we pay almost nobody step one through five. We're a little bit more competitive at highway, so we tend to step, step people in at step one, step two, but we promote them fairly quickly to get to step five, because that's where the wage really should be. That being the case, my thought is to take step five and correlate it to step one in a new system, and then build from that step one, a trajectory that because it unfolds over a longer period of time, will have more upside potential for the employee. See, right now, you get to step 10, you stop. You don't get anything after that except for a COLA, once COLA's approved at town meeting. I'd like to change that to 10, 15, 20, even 25. And over the course of your career with the town of Douglas, if you stay that long, you would see your base salary go up by about 33%. Today, with a 10-step system, you're going up about 21%. So by rough comparison. When I priced all of this out, tried to make the system work, it's too expensive to do in one year. We cannot do it in one year. It needs to be a two-year process. Because I would like to take that compensation table and have it vetted by the personnel board, by the select board, by the finance committee before it's put in place, my goal is to have that compensation table prepared for debate at the special town meeting in November. And that for purposes of this budget, we would do a 4% COLA, which is traditionally very high for the town of Douglas. We haven't done, I don't know that anybody can remember, a 4% COLA. But it would get us part of the way to being able to pay people onto the new table. That's the strategy, is to spread it out over a couple of years. So that's why you see some of these wage increases in, across all departments, because it's reflecting a 4% COLA. The other piece of this, just as a little reminder, you need to evaluate me, because there are elements of my contract that we had agreed to that have been triggered and that have money tied to them. You specifically had a $5,000 step for economic development and other grant activity. When I did the department heads' requested budget, I wanted to substantially increase the budget for legal counsel. It was my view that we need to enhance the quality and quantity of time that we're getting from our attorneys. But in the file analysis, I couldn't keep it in the budget compared to the other needs brought up by the department heads. So it does increase from $76,000 to $80,000, but it won't go all the way up to the $95,000 that I had hoped.
Sorry, Matt. Will that increase trigger a different relationship with our counsel?
Well, yeah. So one of the things I really am hoping for is that we get more representation at our meetings. I'm very uncomfortable with the idea that applicants come to land use committees with their attorney, engineers, professionals, and we sit there flat-footed. We don't even have legal counsel in the room. So when we get into the weeds and there might be a dispute over the interpretation of a regulation or a word in a regulation, we have our volunteers and probably one professional staff person who's not an attorney trying to hold their own against, you know, a pretty forceful applicant and usually very zealous representation from their attorney. So. So at best, what that means is the whole thing gets delayed, because everybody will scratch their head and say, we should run this by counsel. So we're going to continue this the next month. I just, we can be more efficient and more effective if we had more time commitment. So we're in a flat fee arrangement. Our contract specifically with land use is one meeting a month. But we have zoning, planning, conservation, we've got lots of people meeting. So that was, that was the objective of trying to do that. The, in the finance department, allowance is made for a negotiation for the renewal of the finance director's contract. There's also an increase in the audit cost. It's nice to be successful with grants, federal grants in particular, because it's money that we can use for projects that doesn't come from our local taxpayer. But it triggers federal audit requirements, the so-called single audit. And if you want a really nice explanation of that, you can make an appointment with Gene and hear the uglies of the single audit. It's very detailed, and it requires the auditors to do extra work. So they've already told us it'd be more like $38,000, not $23,000.
Is that our existing audit firm?
Yeah. So you can't make a change in your audit firm unless you form an entity called an audit committee to do the procurement for that.
That's right.
So it's a long process, not just a post and go. In the assessors, to increase the wage of the principal assessor in order to attract qualified candidates, so that's changing the stepping grade.
Matt, I don't want to derail the meeting.
No.
Just go back, if you could, to the selectman's section.
Yeah.
The town reports page. I know we print more than we can give out. But is 500 enough to meet those that are interested in hard copies?
Yeah, I think we're talking about a drastic reduction and...
Yeah, I'm probably going to cut the order in half. It goes online, because we have way too many leftover books.
It's pretty shameful, the number of books we throw away. So we can't keep doing this.
We could probably get by with that, and there's, I think it was 100 books at least minimum to order.
Yeah. So five's enough?
Yeah, I could price it. I mean, have them definitely give me a price, but I would say, yeah, probably.
Okay. I know it's online, this, folks do like the hard copy, so we'll find out.
There's definitely an audience. People who take it, take it every year.
Yeah.
But with people moving out of town, some people, you know, not being as involved as they were in the past, the number of the books that are taken is really small.
I understand. All right.
I'm not going to hover over a lot of these smaller changes. I will draw attention to, at the bottom of the page, the town clerk. I had to increase the wages in the budget, because we, Ms. Furno and I went over the number of elections and the number of people she has to have on staff, and she was short, so we needed to adjust that. They don't get a step or, or any increase. The wage rate goes up with the COLA, but it doesn't go up. They don't get steps.
Was that just a one-time thing with Dave's second? Meaning, well, you said the number of elections, that's fairly standard. It's one, maybe two. In this case, we had three, but that was kind of a one...
So this year, because it's a fiscal year, there's a town election, there may be a runoff, so there may be a primary, party primary, and then you have a general.
Okay.
And then another... No, there was three, but then there's the hours.
Right.
And the state requires us to be open for more hours than we had been in the past. They give us a grant to cover that, but there's still some, it was a, it's a straight calculation on the number of hours per election, number of volunteers. Talk a little bit about community development. In the wage section there, again, that reflects COLA, it reflects steps for new employees. Economic development wages, the employee went, was only at 19 hours in fiscal '22. At fall meeting, was brought up to 30 hours, so the budget for the next year will include a 30-hour position. So that's why the salary goes up, $15,413. We made some minor adjustments to police and fire wages. We just shaved back some of the part-time wages in the fire department, some of the overtime calculations, too. We had originally, when the department had submitted their budgets, they were submitting worst-case scenario, so that every single shift that was filled by someone, was filled by a full-time, regular staffer getting time and a half and not a per DM or call member. And that isn't actually how it works, so I just cut a little bit out of that in order to get us to balance and to reflect the reality of how those departments run. Paging through, on Highway, the Highway Superintendent had requested a brand-new FTE. I just want to remind folks, we, we collectively, the select board that was seated at the time, which is, Select Board Fitzpatrick wasn't, but Selectman Hughes was, and the town administrator at the time was me, promised people in this very room that we would not increase the head count of the town during the first five years after the override passed, unless we had some compelling information to the contrary that made it necessary. And we did hire an economic development director, and we also have seen that $4.3 million in grants come in. And another 3.3 is, we believe, well, within reach, we're very competitive in the federal process. I wouldn't assume for a second that he's successful and that we end up with $7.7 million worth of grant money that we may not have had if we hadn't had that employee present. We also hired an assistant chief in the fire department, who also brought in Grant for a brush truck, so more than carried her own weight in the year that she's been hired just on the grant alone, but for other purposes, management purposes, command coverage purposes. So we, we made those decisions based on, you know, a compelling need to do that, but we still held the line. We brought the building commissioner from part-time to full-time. But for the most part, we have continued to run the town with the exact same number of people we've had for a long time. And it's starting to get, the machinery's starting to get creaking, groan a little bit under the burden of that. And in Highway in particular, John has been asking for somebody, an additional FTE for a couple of years in a row now. And this year, I thought we'd be able to swing it, but we can't. So I've put it into the fiscal '24 budget with the hopes that we don't have to move off the number. But this, my, my cut from the department head's request reflects the reduction of that one person, and that also filters through to snow and ice. But you will notice as well, though, that even after I removed some funds from this budget request, that there's still a substantial increase at Highway. So you're going to see expenses go up by $19,000, maintenance go up by about $23,000, and the snow and ice budget will still go up from 218, or call it 219, up to 253, just short of 253. So our annual progress, trying to get the snow and ice budget to a realistic number, which is somewhere between 300 and 350, we're still making progress towards that.
That's really pretty good. I think when I started, I think we were covering maybe 30, 40% of what we actually would snow and ice.
Yeah.
Good.
We would like our free cash budgeting to be more free from this demand by snow and ice. We can't control the weather, but we can certainly try to make sure we have enough in that budget. In public health, you see a large increase in the wages for public health, $14,000, $240. Our public health nurse was able to give us a tremendous amount of time and effort during COVID pandemic. And as a part of the reason why that was possible, because the state was regularly funding a grant that caught us up in terms of hours. But nurses these days don't make $10 an hour or $15 an hour. So this wage reflects a $40 an hour public health nurse salary for the amount of hours that she's playing and putting in. Veterans' benefits are decreased, but not because we decreased them as a matter of budgeting. We don't have the opportunity to do that. We have to pay the benefits if the veterans live in our town. The veterans' agent, however, it's sad to say, but many of our veterans are getting older and some are passing, and they're either moving away or they're no longer drawing benefits. So he's comfortable with the $50,000 figure, will cover the town's obligation for veterans' Some wage changes at the library. But then we get to the school section. I've already mentioned that we would go to 2% year-over-year, that's the $280,000 increase, the free cash transfer for contract settlement, and the transportation increase. But look at just how calm things are at Blackstone Valley Regional. They're going to be voted in a separate article, but I'm showing you the number here, because it goes to our bottom line. There was very little change in BBT this year. Norfolk Aggie is up $53,000, which reflects an increase in enrollment, a slight increase in tuition, and an increase in transportation costs. This format that we use for the FinCom flyer takes all insurance and employee benefits and rolls them into one line. So you know that I said health insurance changes a 0%. In terms of our working rate, we had some small changes in the census, so we're, we're funding more plans this year. So the rate did not change, but we have more people in our program, about three or four And I felt that it was relatively good news for Maya on our property and casualty. I had budgeted 12%. They were comfortable of, did I take it to seven or eight, Gene?
Seven.
Maya, property and casualty?
We were using...
I was using 12.
Yes, and I said 10, and I think we brought it down to eight.
We brought it to eight. So they recommended actually six, but I brought it to eight. So 8% year-over-year, it's not the greatest. It's still way above our revenue growth, but it's much better than 12. Then debt service, I just want you to take note of that number, because there is excluded debt that is rolling off this year. So that number reflects both principal and interest that will roll off. The taxpayer feels that, the budget doesn't. So we have excluded debt on both sides of the budget, so it cancels itself out, but the taxpayer pays them. So that's the change, and the taxpayer's overall bill will be down for $88,620, which corresponds rather nicely to the increase in the levy. So overall, including the free cash transfer, the budget is up $1.269 million to a bottom-line figure of $32,584,323. That's where we're at now. Are there any questions about any of that? The town hearing is a week from tonight, so if we're going to make recommendations of changes to the finance committee, we've got a week to do so.
The Highway Department, I mean, back in the roughest of days, we were hacking that department almost annually from, and I should know this and not you, but from like 2012 on, I mean, how much, how much lighter is he?
I think he was reduced a position, and I want to say it may have been due to a retirement that he didn't backfill.
That's right.
I am, there is an allowance in this budget for an anticipated retirement in the fall. I still would like the superintendent to be able to hire someone on July 1 and learn from that person who's retiring through three months before that person retires. So there's three months of salary built into this for the double coverage. I didn't want to take him away from that, because I, you know, it's snowplow roots and all kinds of things that people need to learn. It's not, it's kind of hard to have somebody who's, oh, you got their own route, come teach you yours. Better to learn from the gentleman who's been doing it for years and years.
No, I'm digesting it, but...
Hal, any questions or comments?
No, I'm, people should use the mics a little bit, because I'm fading out of the doc.
Do we have to do a motion to sign? Or can we just sign the warrants?
We have them ready.
They're ready to be signed. I mean, never hurts to take a vote, belt and suspenders, right?
Right.
If you need it, it's extraneous. If you do need it, then at least you did it.
Yeah.
You closed the warrant. I suppose you should say, to sign and post the warrant, because then it's, that's your responsibility is to post it.
Make a motion to close the warrant, sign and post it? Is that what you...
You already closed it, so no...
So to make a motion to sign and post it?
Both the annual and special.
Both the annual and special. I was clearing my throat, I didn't get it up.
I will second that motion.
Motion having been made and seconded, any further discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bone, aye.
Cortez, aye.
Davis, aye.
Thank you. The motion passes. Number five, sign the May 10, 2022 annual town election warrant, impossible votes.
This is where Selectman Hughes would say, what would happen if we didn't sign this? We never really have tested that, and we're not going tonight, Mr. Vice Chairman.
You're sure about that?
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion that we sign the May 10 annual town election warrant.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bone, aye.
Cortez, aye.
Davis, aye.
Thank you. Item number six. Discuss ARPA spending and reporting, impossible votes.
Can you enlighten me as to why this is on the agenda?
I thought we were going to be discussing with Tom and Gene, ARPA. There's going to be a report due in April, and I didn't, I didn't have the agenda.
Yeah, I don't know, because the report due this month.
Do you want to pass over it, or...
Yeah, we might as well.
Any objection to passing over?
No, I just know it's a lot of money, and I want to make certain that we take a good, hard swing at it.
We'll be discussing this at our next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I think I've brought, I've briefed the board as far as I can at this point. I got to turn my attention back to this issue, but we've been talking about use of ARPA funds for emergency duty compensation for the pandemic period, and we've sat down with our collective bargaining units to have a conversation. We've received all the data we need to do a calculation, but we all have to be comfortable with the number. I have suggested, and I think it was well-received, an hourly rate so that we can associate or tie the bonus that somebody would receive for hazard pay to the actual number of hours they worked while the stated declaration of emergency was in place. Because I'm not real keen on, I notice other jurisdictions are just throwing out a number. Oh, well, that was $3,000 bucks, and then everybody who qualified got $3,000. Well, we'll... that was 3,000 bucks. And then everybody who qualified got 3,000. Well, what about the person who worked nonstop?
Right.
Burned the midnight oil, never went home compared to somebody who went to a couple of scenes maybe over the course of a better part of a year and a half. It's no comparison to the amount of risk that the person, those two people took. So I want the computation to reflect the risk. And there is a cap in the law. We can't go on forever with it. The other thing that I'm exploring with ARPA funds, since it's on the agenda, I'll mention, is, well, first of all, our strategy, the rules have drastically loosened up around so-called revenue replacement. And when ARPA first came out, we were required to basically go back through all of our financials and really tease out all the revenue numbers and try to estimate how much revenue the town of Douglas lost because of closures of various and sundry businesses across the town. We're not a big, heavy commerce town, so Jean and I, this, looked at it and said, for the effort we would expend and the paperwork we'd have to file, the return was minimal. Like, it was more expensive to have us do the work than to let it go. Now, the federal government, in its infinite wisdom, has come out with much less restrictive calculations for lost revenue. Revenue replacement funds can be used for a wide variety of purposes as opposed to the tightly defined, you know, water and sewer expansion, hazard pay, COVID, you know, anti-COVID or COVID response measures. So we're going to work with our, with Tom, our vendor, on coming up with a strategy for that. One of the carve-outs that was in the ARPA legislation was for improving air handling, air circulation, HVAC, and critical public infrastructure. The truth be told, that probably was driven by prisons and other places where people are held against their will and where they need air to move around because that was an issue. But the way it's written, critical public assets and air handling, we have an HVAC problem at the fire department. We also have a confluence of interesting events where National Grid is significantly increasing its subsidy for heat pump and mini-split units for energy efficiency in buildings. So these two things taken together, they don't qualify for green communities because green communities can't get their head wrapped around how these things work and how they generate savings. It just doesn't work in their model. So if we used ARPA money together with the National Grid, basically it's a grant, it's incentive payment, could we significantly improve the air quality at the fire department where we know from testing that we have issues to address? So that is the other loose end that I'm trying to tie up. The reporting date is the end of April?
I believe it is, yes.
Yeah. And there's an online platform for us to report.
The funds have to be used by 2024. Is that the fiscal 2024 or is that calendar 24?
So...
October.
It's federal fiscal '24, which is going to be October...
'23.
Of '24, I believe.
'24? '23?
Twenty, no. That's the beginning of the...
Yeah, it'd be October.
Oh, so the end, so yeah.
It would be at the end.
The end, October '24, right?
Yeah. We won't have any problem.
I know that, but time goes before you know.
It does. It does.
That's why I asked the question. There's been a lot of conversations about what it can be used for. Do we get to a point where we're going to try to define that?
So I want to pursue this revenue replacement line of inquiry to determine how much of our 2.7 million can be spent as revenue replacement as opposed to tightly focused.
Yep.
Because when we go back to that tightly focused model, there's a very narrow range of things we can use it for.
Yep.
So... A lot of this will be, and the other thing, I, sorry, Mr. Chairman, but I should also remind everyone that while we walk around saying we're confident we'll get the federal grant for the water extension project, it is not guaranteed that we will. So if we don't, we will probably have to use at least half of our ARPA funds to get that project done.
When do we hear on that federal grant?
So what a process this has been. This has been like the physical exam that never ends. It's been painful, really painful. We, the deadline was March 20. We beat the deadline by a long time. But then our regional representative started peppering us with Amelia in questions. And in some cases, I'm not entirely sure, knew what she was even asking for. She was responding to her supervisor's questions and trying to translate and filter that to us. So we kept sending her things, and it wasn't exactly what she needed. She finally was able to articulate exactly why she needed something. And we were, to finish that off, now, the feedback, informal feedback, is that we have a very competitive application. Each region is bringing forth one significant project that they're going to emphasize, and our project happens to be that project for this region. So that makes me feel good. But the world is full of uncertainties. Until we sign the contract and actually get a notice to proceed from the Economic Development Administration engineers, because they're going to review our plans, and they give us the order to proceed, then we can go out and bid the contracts that they've funded. So what people will, I'll handle that in my report later on.
Okay.
No votes needed.
On six, no.
Number seven, Whitensville Fish and Game, change of offices for the ABCC, possible votes. We have a complete package here?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Jean had a question.
I'm sorry.
I do want to make one of our comments on the ARPA funds. We had a couple weeks ago, I went to my annual conference, and they had a great presenter who was, was the, auditing for sort of handling similar to what Tom does for us.
I'm sorry, Jean, just for Hal, could you come up to the table? Sorry. I know you like the limelight.
I do. I like the comfortable chairs, so.
Come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The only thing I want to say is I want to caution before any votes are taken regarding ARPA is that we consult. Because even with the premium pay, there are strict guidelines.
Okay.
And where other communities may have done it or may continue to do it, I'm, ask permission and not forgiveness because the last thing I want to see happen is that we have to pay the money back.
Right.
So this is a lot of money for the town. There are, they are loosening some of the guidelines, such as the revenue replacement, but there are many avenues in which you can spend this money. And, you know, I look at it like any other revenue source, free cash or something else, where I think there should be, you know, you have your options and you vote on it, no different than capital does. You know, you have the list, this is what we can spend it on, but this is what we choose to do. So I did, I was able to download the side deck, and this is really a brief overview of what she discussed. And no way am I saying this is everything, but it's a good starting point to kind of direct us to ask those questions with the consultant. So I don't know how the, you know, Matt has some ideas, and I think that's great, but, you know, it sounds like a lot of money, but it goes fast. So...
It's a true capital.
So before any votes are taken, I would at least weigh the options that you have and make sure whatever you're planning to do meets the spirit of the law so that we don't in four years have to say, you know what, that quite, didn't quite fit.
As one Massachusetts town did, yes.
Yeah. And there are parameters. You know, the intent behind it may not be what other people are following. So I just want to caution you on that. And, you know, that's all I have got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Thanks for pointing that out. I didn't see her limelight.
I just happened to look, and Shirley was...
Fred, I was like this.
Anything else on six before we move on?
No, thank you.
Okay. Whitensville Fish and Game, ABCC, change of offices filing. We don't have anybody here, do we?
No, they don't need to be here for this.
Right. Do we have everything we need, Lisa?
Yep.
So we just vote on it?
Yep.
I accept the motion.
Motion to change the officers for the Whitensville Fish and Game for the ABCC.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none. Roll call vote?
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bone, aye.
Cortez, aye. All right. Number eight, authorized town administrator to sign animal control intermunicipal agreement, and possible vote.
So I went over this with FinCom the other night. We'll go over it a little bit more detail tonight. Our intermunicipal agreement with the town of Uxbridge for the provision of animal control is expiring in June. And we looked to build the group, but in the final analysis, the group will be Hope Dale, Mendon, Blackstone, Millville, Uxbridge, and Douglas. We won a regionalization grant this year that will offset the cost of this intermunicipal agreement for ACO. So Uxbridge went out and got $130,707. So for this year, our share of the ACO will be $19,179. Just bear in mind that on a go-forward basis, this is going to be more like 40,000.
Right.
But it's in a significant increase in the level of service. So right now, we share one ACO amongst all the towns. The new agreement will give us two full-time animal control officers, one part-time for evenings, and one part-time for full weekend, 24/7 on the weekend coverage. In addition, we'll be implementing a more proactive role in a licensing procedure for all the towns. So this is a pretty significant increase in the level of service here. It's cost-effective, definitely.
The grant is not renewable that Uxbridge got?
No. So it's a best practices grant, regionalization grant. They let you launch with it, but you can't roll it over and keep getting it.
What town's administering?
Uxbridge is the host.
Uxbridge is the host through, through this grant and previous...
I tried mightily to get these because it would be so much less expensive to have this person on our payroll, just for benefits and other things.
Yeah.
But Uxbridge always wins out, it seems.
Okay.
See, what Blackstone brings to the table in this is generous on the part of the town of Blackstone because they have a shelter, and the shelter can be utilized by this large enough group. So we don't have to store animals, because that's what it is, when you put animals in a vet's practice or in a kennel. You're just storing them. You're not really trying to do anything with them, so.
If nobody else has anything, I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the animal control intermunicipality agreement.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. A roll call vote, please.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bone, aye.
Cortez, aye.
Davis, aye.
Item number nine, fire department generator and electrical project contract award in possible votes. Are we selecting one of these two?
Yes, you are.
Okay.
The chair is here to give you a report.
He just gave you my letter.
Yep, it's in their package.
Sure, yep. But since you...
I don't have it. I don't have the letter. Oh, actually, I do. I'm sorry.
So these packets were forwarded to you guys. But the packets themselves, probably before that.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Sorry, yeah.
Shirley, I guess I would just ask, I don't know if you want to come up to the mic or not, if there's any differences you can enlighten us on between the two top bid submissions?
Not really. What we did was we...
Could you, could I trouble you to come up? I know you like the limelight every bit as much as Jean does.
No, I'm just, yeah. You're welcome. So the building and facilities committee reviewed all the packets. I think we had like eight. And we individually took the information home, reviewed it. It was, and I think we were maybe a second meeting, which gave a little more time because Matt said it would be to the town's advantage. But we did meet, and this was a top priority at the meeting on the 17th. And after some discussion and going around the table and process of elimination, McRitchie, who is doing work for the town now in the municipal generator situation, was number one along with Architectural Engineers, Inc., which is now IMEG, sort of tied as to the qualifications. And we, you know, we do go by the RFP, I believe it was RFQ, that Matt had sent out, and we use that as a guide and go through the whole process individually. And the standby choice that we came up with was NVS, which was number two. The only one that was new in the number of the process was Architectural Engineers, now IMEG. And Matt was supposed to check their qualifications or references out, and Lisa probably, whoever. And if there was a problem, he was going to let us know. So that's our recommendation, and...
To whoever has the information, whether it's Lisa or, are either of these local companies? Do they have any ties to Douglas?
No, I don't think so.
No. This is a tough one. So McRitchie is here, working in this building, and we really like the personal interactions we have. I think he was very thorough, very professional, and yet at the same time approachable and answered questions and...
And he was our number one recommendation.
Easily our number one for this project.
Yeah.
Definitely. The compelling thing about IMEG is their references. A lot of the work they've done, they've done for the state police, which I think is a pretty high threshold of, you know, you got to be, you got to hit the reliability targets in order to get the work done. If you don't get the work done, I know you're smiling.
I am smiling. I'm also not saying anything.
I'm not saying they have awesome buildings and awesome systems. I just think that the filter gets pretty narrow at the end when you have public safety complexes. And one would hope that the state police get a pretty good group to do their work.
One of the things that, in going through this, that I looked for was how many electrical engineers they have on board, their backgrounds of the main person that's doing the work, and also the references, of course. And it was brought up in a few of the packets that the, what do I want to say, generators feel like backordered.
Right.
It is getting better, but they did mention how, you know, they, they brought it, they were on board with it. They knew, they seemed to know what they were doing. The one thing that we always, we seemed to like both times about McRitchie was that it's sort of a hands-on type situation where they come in and the individual did the investigation on, you know, without having, just walking around and looking. So, but both, they seem to be both at the same, and the committee really wanted both listed as number one.
That's fine. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Has there been any delay in your timeline expectations from McRitchie on our current project?
No. So he's almost at bid documents now. So he's 80% done. Well, he was 80% done his drawings at...
When he's...
Chairwoman Mozinski's last meeting.
Yeah.
So he's probably done at this point.
So you're confident it wouldn't hinder his progress on the fire station, completing this particular project?
No, they won't overlap at all.
Yeah.
By the time he ramps, if he were selected, if he would ramp that one up, he would be finished here.
Okay.
He'd be doing contract... He'd be doing contract administration, but that's a different.
And you've had a very good experience with him?
You know, what I like about him, I agree with Shirley, that he, when he does walk throughs through the building, he's very hands-on. He's, you know, enthusiastic. You can tell when somebody's looking at a wall full of stuff that you don't, that looks like a pile, a bunch of wires to me. But he's, well, this goes there, and this goes there, and this goes there, and he was much more engaged in trying to translate what he was seeing for our benefit as laypeople. This is why it matters to you, this is why it's a problem. And I think we need that because I think we need to understand what the scope of the project really is and what needs to be done.
And you can appreciate what he's doing if you understand the process.
The other thing I have enjoyed about working with McRichie is that his awareness of the assets on the poles around a site, frankly, it's just as important as his awareness of what's inside the building. So, the fire department had a study done after the building got hit by lightning, and there was a set of recommendations that arose from a qualified electrical engineer. And yet, McRichie's taken issue with a lumber of those findings because you really can't say you need to convert a building from single-phase to three-phase power, which may have ramifications for all kinds of things inside that building, without really investigating how much power is actually being brought into the building. So, as it turns out, fire department has a much larger electrical service in the building than they do transformer to serve it on the street. So, we pushed the cost or some of the burden of this onto National Grid and away from us, from having to, you know, have a three-phase power transformer installed outside on a pad, blah, blah, blah. We just need a bigger transformer on the tower, on the pole.
And you learn this through your interaction with McRichie?
Yeah.
One of the other things, too, when he did report to the building and facilities committee, gave us an update as to where he was and so forth, and some of the things like Matt has mentioned. And he was willing to take any questions we had, get back to us, and one of our members did email me with some questions that I forwarded to Matt and, I think, to Matt Pinoy.
Still pending an answer on a couple.
As to the status of the generator here and the height and.
Yeah, we've been back and forth.
Environmental issues.
With Bob Sullivan, too, on whether or not a unit that big would wet stack or not. So, it's been a fully engaged conversation.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Hal, any questions? Hal, can you hear me?
I should notice that.
Any questions on this?
No.
Okay, thank you.
He's on his plane.
He finished the plant, he's on the lighthouse again.
What's that, we have a problem with light?
No, I noticed that you finished the plant painting and you're back to the lighthouse.
Yeah, I was disturbing the rest of the family, so I moved in.
Just discussion, I mean, it appears clear to me from everything we've heard that McRichie appears to be, I think, out in front.
That's the feeling that I'm getting, that it's a very good working relationship and why jeopardize and chance another mishap.
Given that, I'd entitate a motion.
Make a motion that we choose McRichie Engineering for the fire department generator and electrical project.
Second.
Any further discussion? Or just ask the chief, anything to put on the record, anything from the department?
No.
Roll call vote, then.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bone, aye.
Cortez, aye.
David, aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. All right. Review public safety and highway needs reports and dissolve committee possible votes.
At the risk of delaying the wheels of progress, I wonder if we should wait on this issue until Kevin is back with us?
I think that's probably a fair assessment. Any objection from anybody?
Nope.
We'll pass over item 11 then until.
We'll have it on our next agenda.
Next agenda, please, as Chairman returns. Item 10, that was, I'm sorry. Item 11, approve minutes, possible votes.
Make a motion that we approve the March 1, Tuesday, General Board of Selectmen meeting minutes.
Those are the only ones, right?
Yes, they are.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bone, aye.
Cortez, aye.
David, aye.
Thank you. Your report. I feel just like Kevin when I said that, too. Just saying.
Mr. Chairman, starting this week, so yesterday, and continuing through tomorrow, and then probably again on April 18th, observant residents will notice large shipments of pipe beginning to arrive in the town of Douglas. Pipe for water main extension and upgrades for the project that all these grants have been chased to achieve. And what that will do is it triggers the need to communicate to the taxpayer, especially those residents along Gilboa Street and in surrounding neighborhoods, on that small stretch of North Street between Gilboa and Main and the intersection of North and Main, what this project means specifically for them and then for the whole town. There will be no fewer than three utility pipes run up and down that sections where they don't exist now. So, there will be a water main extension roughly from the Shell Station at the top of the hill, down the hill, under 146 into the job site that everybody can see, the big construction site. And that's in lieu of that resource needing to find water from some other source. But the water main has to be upgraded all the way back to North Street in order to handle, successfully handle, the additional flow and pressure needs. And eventually, there will be a loop that will run from down northeast Main all the way across the warehouse property being developed by CRG to link northeast Main to Gilboa, which will significantly improve the flow and pressure in the municipal water system in that part of town. The goal is to get the job site construction water as soon as possible, so water for their needs. They are already pouring the floor slab, so this has been going on for a better part of a week and a half now. It's not all that visible from the street, but there's a tremendous amount of activity up there during normal business hours. They are pouring the floor. So, we'll be tearing up the road in sections in order to complete our work and trying to coordinate the water main extension and upgrade with a wastewater extension. And the wastewater extension will include replacement of the rather antiquated old sewer pump station. You can see it's kind of knocked sideways almost, or at least the fencing around it is, or the bollards that are around it are sideways. The control panel's a little bit cockeyed, right next to the Gilboa Street dam, so Gilboa Pond Dam. You can see that there on the side, you often see a water truck parked there.
I was going to say where Bob's trucks parked.
Yeah, pretty much all the time. So, that's going to be upgraded significantly, and there are some design components to that. And that will probably be one of the lengthiest, most involved installations in this whole project, beginning of the actual pump station put in place and the manholes associated with it. I think it's really important for the environment that this warehouse on the other side of 146 not use traditional commercial septic system on the property. It's basically a bottomless sand filter over there. There's no, there's no natural boundary for all of that effluent to, it'll filter out, but it's also going to plume out because the material is not proper for that application. And there's a big wetland across.
Yeah, it's too fast.
And it's just, it was just not acceptable to the town of Uxbridge, so the town of Douglas having the capacity at our wastewater plant, we're able to connect them, we'll connect the warehouse in Douglas and use our excess capacity at our plant to handle the situation. And then, that resource is applying for a franchise to be able to extend its natural gas service from its existing step-down gate in Sutton, again, under the highway into the town of Douglas and at least as far as North Street. And that might be one of the bigger changes in the long run because it makes the properties there much more valuable because now they have a source of natural gas for heat. One of the boons of this, a huge improvement to the security of the building that we all, some people refer to as Guilford of Main, it was Schuster's Mill, is that right now they store large quantities of liquid propane in order to be able to run the plant that they use to heating and cooling for both the cannabis grow and the envelope factory. By hooking up the natural gas, we have to eliminate all the storage of those, of liquid propane, and all the deliveries, and all the human interactions with the resource that happen now. And we'll also be able to connect them to municipal water for purposes of fire suppression, because right now they're not. They are tied into the pond across the street, which may or may not be a fully functioning source for water for sprinkler system. We're going to put them on our municipal water. So, that building, the safety of that building is going to, I think it's going to be improved significantly. We're trying to time this so that we are not closing any roads while school buses are still running to get kids back and forth to school. And this is going to jam us up a little bit at the end of June and into July because they really want to turn their fire pump on because they think they're going to have a roof on their building by July 15th. So, between the last day of school, which I think is the 21st, to the middle of July, there might be some hustle time in there. We are going to fully communicate with all the residents. We're going to describe the project, and we'll have ways to communicate with people, whether it's through the written word, through our website. And at the appropriate time, I'll be looking for the board's authorization to use code RED from time to time to send targeted messages to that part of town so people know, well, tomorrow, such and such a length of road is going to be closed. If your driveway's on that length, you know, you need to set up your schedule. And it won't be 24 hours notice, it'll be longer than that so that people can plan. But that, we understand that the communication of that schedule is going to be really important to people. In the contract, the contractor doing the installation must purchase portable traffic control light system.
Can you mute him?
Drop this paintbrush.
So, the system will, I mean, I can mute him, but I don't know that I want to.
You might want to.
You may want to.
If he comes back, I'll tell you.
I bet you he thought he muted himself.
Exactly. That will offset, in large part, the almost $340,000 set aside in the contract for police details. First of all, we were skeptical that we'd find enough police officers to fill all those details.
That's a fair assessment.
And whether or not they would truly be safe for people. So, if you have never encountered this before, I think it's, most people have, but in case you haven't, the area that's being worked on will be closed off with Jersey barriers. There'll be lights on each end that will tell you whether or not you're turned to go. Standard, red, yellow, green, with a little chip inside so that if you're driving in a ladder truck with your lights and sirens, it will turn it to green. At the conclusion of the project, those items will become the property of the town of Douglas. So, that's a term of the contract. They have to, we'll own those forever, so no matter.
Sure, we could find future uses of them.
Whether it's Oktoberfest or any other need for road closure, we'll have that asset. And they're not that big, really, they're kind of small. So, yes, people will have periods of time where they're trying to get out of the driveway, and that might be the day that they're digging in front of your driveway. There'll be no, as far as we know, weather permitting, the only time when night construction will be authorized is Mass DOT has specifically said that they're going to require night work when the roadway's, and the services are being extended under their highway. They want those ramps reopened as quickly as possible, so they're mandating night work. All the permitting is in place from the conservation committees in both Uxbridge and Douglas, and we have a permit from Mass DOT now to do the work under the highway. So, that's where we stand with it. Like I said, we'll be informing people when there's a specific section of streets being worked on. I'm going to predict right now, and I want to manage everybody's expectations accordingly, that section of North Street, from the North Street Bridge up to Main Street is a mess. And everybody knows it, right? It's like a rumble strip when you drive your car over it. Well, you can only imagine what it's like under the surface. A lot of these mill buildings were built with the notion that the mill owner was said, you're building me a mill right there, and whatever you have to do to get the utilities to work, you're going to do it. So, we may encounter pipes in locations we didn't expect, cut-off utility pipes that are no longer being used or in the way, more likely than not, significant ledge outcroppings. And we're going to have to deal with those things as we encounter them. It is currently unknown, we didn't go in there and do any pourings. We recently had a water main breakdown there, and it was a pretty significant project. There were a lot of unanticipated obstacles when the crew was down there trying to reconnect the water main. So, we know that there's going to be problems on North Street. The good news is we're going to fix them, so. I want to update everyone on that, and I just want to go back to the warrant so that people understand a couple items on the warrant. One of them is that piece of property. This is not a taking, I repeat, it is not a taking, it is not eminent domain, it has nothing to do with that at all. Cede Aldrich donated a substantial piece of property to the town in the 1950s, and she properly recorded it at the Registry of Deeds as a gift. In order to make sure we didn't run into any additional title issues with any of the land over there, research was done in the minutes of the town meeting of the town of Douglas from several years before the gift all the way up to the present day. And there was no specific motion ever set down that the town accepted the gift. So, even though it was recorded at the Registry of Deeds, and there really is, there are no heirs to have any claim to this because it was gifted and recorded as a gift, to fully perfect the title, there needs to be a positive vote of town meeting. So, that's why it's on now because we want to transfer that land to the developer. That little strip that's in Douglas is necessary for the construction of the driveway that's going to go into that building. And it is part of the conveyance of municipally-owned property in that part of town to the developer. So, it's just a necessary step, and that's why it's there. The other piece that's on there, you saw there's a match for a grant. So, we're in the process of applying for Mass Works Site Readiness Grant for North Street to upgrade the water and sewer service under that street. So, that's from Gilboa Street, north, going uphill. In order to achieve that engineering, we'll have to match some portion of it. And so, the strategy is actually very simple. It's dictated by the construct, the way that grant is set up, not by our needs. We figure there's about $600,000 worth of engineering. We're going to apply for a $500,000 grant. When you apply for a grant larger than $500,000, the process and the restrictions are much more competitive and difficult. We feel like we make a very compelling case, that we have a strong application. We'd rather be more certain about the $500,000 than take a chance and get into the bigger pool and fight with Boston and Worcester for bigger grants. pool and fight with Boston and Wester for bigger grants over $500,000. It's just a necessary strategy here. So, that's what I wanted to go over in the warrant. Are there any other questions for me and stuff that's in the warrant? We could go on and on about, so right now we are in the process of closing up a number of procurements, so we're locking down the last piece of the gymnasium window replacement, which is the asbestos removal. I'm using a process called the tradesman procurement process to get a statewide contract, so I don't have to advertise and bid, depending on the size of the project, because the actual window project itself has already been awarded. And the work should be starting at the library to replace the ceiling soon. We are out to bid right now for the brush truck, which was financed by federal grant, and for the actual construction installation contract for the water mains previously mentioned. So, we've been very busy on the procurement front.
I do have a question about the warrant.
Sure.
Just on the zoning, proposed zoning changes, were they run by town council, just...
To the best of my knowledge, yeah, after your...
Just to make sure that...
Yep. After your conversation, they were vetted by legal counsel.
Yeah, thank you.
I think I'm going to stop there, given the hour.
Understood, yeah.
I think it's appropriate to stop there.
Open session for topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of the meeting.
I only have one question.
Cool.
The, remember, we did, we, that grant that we got tied in with a few communities for the health inspector?
Yes.
And we were obligated for like $37,000 or something. Can we get a status update on that next time to see if, because we're obligated to it, did we get any benefit out of that?
I will inquire and get you an update next time.
I'm just curious, not a big stick.
I, I think I know the answer, is that we feel very helped, but I want somebody else to tell you that, not me.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else?
I have one. Mike and I sat on a meeting with both Matt and Lisa with D C R. regarding the quote-unquote improvements to the trunk line, this net. I'm wondering... The paving. The paving, right. They've moved away from that. I'm still not convinced it's the right thing for the town. I know the former senator has been very eager about getting a bike path, and I don't know the particulars, but he's very eager to get some funding to connect a bike path at Uxbridge down the, down that way. I wonder if...
North Smithfield.
I wonder if the board would entertain the idea of maybe connecting with Senator Moore and seeing if he has any interest in the money that's been promised to quote-unquote "improve" Douglas land, to see if he can tap that and make that...
Is he sitting on a board, or does he have some...
He is, he is on the Blackstone Valley National...
Heritage Corridor.
Heritage Corridor.
Excellent, excellent. Founded in 1986.
If we're going to do that...
For those of us who are purists...
Thank you.
For those of us who are purists, it's the John H. Chafee Blackstone River Valley National Heritage Corridor.
But it was still founded in 1986.
Yes, it was.
Yep.
And reauthorized a couple times since then. And Senator Moore was very much involved in that.
Yeah.
A frequent phone conversation partner of some people.
Do we need a motion for this, do you think? Or can we just empower Mr. Bone to follow up on that?
All right. I will do that, and I will have a report. I will do some homework to know exactly what I'm talking about, but I will touch base with Senator Moore and see if that's, if he's aware of what's been discussed in town, and maybe he can deflect their interest towards him.
I would be remiss if I did not add that it slides, jibes nicely with your regional responsibilities.
Oh, of course. No doubt. Anything else?
Just a quick question. Did you hear anything about their proposed meeting, meeting with us, coming into us? The D C R, the 19th?
I have them penciled in for the 19th.
Oh, all right. Got some work to do.
I think I need one of your motions.
All right. I will make a motion that we move into executive session for the purposes of investigation, and then to leave executive session for the sole purpose of adjourning.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bone, aye.
You're going to unmute him. Oh, he's unmuted.
David, aye.
We'll give you a call, Hal.
He did it. Good.
Okay.